... I'd like to welcome everybody to the meeting this evening. And with that said, I'd also like to take this opportunity to introduce some of our guests that are with us this evening. We have Representative Steve Alford from Ulisses. Representative John Dahl from here in Garden City. Representative Don Hyman from Dayton. And Representative Russ James from Lincoln. We also have Miss Sally Koppel, our State Representative of Education, Representative. And we also have Tom Krebs from the Association of Schools. And a bunch of other celebrities out there that I don't know. Could you give a motion for approval of the agenda?
Mr. President, I move that we accept the agenda with the following amendments. Additional certi- classified personnel actions for consideration, item number E3. Remove item EB5D from the original agenda, Kansas Project Launch Contract, and add item number E5D, contract for provision of special education services provided by an orientation and mobility instructor for the 2013-14 school year.
Any questions or discussion?
Yes, thank you.
Sure. Do you accept that? In a second. Now any questions or discussion? All those in favor, please raise your hand. All of them? Thank you. I don't believe we have any public comments or recommendations tonight. Okay, if you want it, the consentant, please.
Mr. President, I move that we accept the present agenda as planned.
One second. All those in favor, please raise your hand. All of them? Thank you. This time, we will have a presentation on the College and Career Readiness Program. A couple of things to keep in mind. One, as we listen to this presentation, try to look at it through various eyes, not one of ours, but that of the general public. And if we've got questions for our presenters, then we can cover some of the things that may come up when we talk to the public. Also, as Rick has told us, we have been accepted to present at the state school board meeting. So, and we go through this, think about which parts of it would be interested in the presenting. That. Turn it over to you, Sal.
Where do you want them up here? I felt honored that you asked me to participate in this with you. I want to share my appreciation with the Garden City School Board that as I travel around my district, which you know is the only forty counties in western Kansas, your school system and how your community works together is awesome and it's unique. They get, this community understands, and they get the importance of a good school system for economic development. Many people ask me, "How does Garden City, how come it's growing the way it is?" And I said, "Well, the leading individuals of the community, they all know how to work together." And so, I commend you for that, and I thank you for that. Every seven years, the state school board has the opportunity to revise and to review the standards of a subject. So, every seven years, we look at math, English Language Arts, science, and we just got through looking at science standards. They follow the year or two after. So, we have rotating cycles. But every seven years, we are charged by the legislature to look at the standards. We are given our authority as a state board by the state constitution, and then the legislators also give us jobs to do. One of those is the standards of the state, the other is assessments. Let's think about when English Language Arts and math needed to be revised and looked at. The year to do that was 2010. But we start looking at that earlier than that because you need to get a hit of the issue. I want you to think back along around 2008 and 2009, and think of the condition of the country at that time and the state of Kansas. I think you would be aware that we were in a recession and money was very, very tight. The state school board, not only in Kansas, but many across the country, were hearing from business and industry that we were not producing students ready for the workforce. They did not have thinking skills that was needed. They were not good cognitive thinkers. So, the Governor's Association got to thinking about this, and so did the association of what we would call our Commissioner of Education. In other states, they may be called the Secretary of Education, but they're all part of this association. Those two got together and said, "You know, we could do a much better job financially if we all worked on this together." So, between the recession, between business and industry, and the third component of that was the military. If you would think back in what the military has done in the last ten years, and think about how they have increased and how global their families have become, it was a big problem for them to go across state lines and for their, we had trouble in the state of Kansas just from military going from Fort Riley to Fort Laburnworth and the different school systems. So, we signed an agreement with the governor at that time, which was Parkinson's, that we would become part of a national group on looking at state assessments. And what this group did, it said, "Okay, what are the top three or four states that have the best assessments in the nation?" And they pulled those assessments, and they started working on those. Of course, Massachusetts is always one of those, and Kansas was one of those. We always lead the nation also in standards. And so, they all got together and started working on standards in Language Arts, English Language Arts, and Math. At the same time, in the state of Kansas, we always had a process that we go through in revising any standards. And that is, we have an executive committee, we have a large review committee, and they consist of Kansas educators, the KSDE staff, and those educators may be from higher ed, and they will be anywhere ranging from anywhere in K-12, educators across the state. We even, at that time, put some business and industry on that review committee, along with this large national group that would send out open review of standards, and they would send them out nationwide. And so, any of the public could get on and make comments, and it was kind of funny because Kansas was one of the states that had a lot of the largest number of comments being contributed to the Common Core. And so, we were pretty proud that we had a lot of people in the state participating on that level. After the committee, national committee got through, and they were ready for the states to adopt these standards, state of Kansas did not adopt them right away. We said, "We want to make sure that we send this back through our usual process." And we did that through the year of '09. Starting in '08, the last part of '08, I started traveling every three months to Washington, DC, in which I was given the review by how the Common Core standards were going, how many people were participating, if it was open to the public during that part of the time, or whether it was closed to the public, the responses that they may have got received. And it was very interesting to watch this process as it developed. At the same time, I was getting the reviews of how ESEA is going to be revised. And if you don't know that, that's no child left behind. Well, as you can tell, I could still be going to DC every three months, and I could still be getting a report on that because that hasn't happened. And so, but because this was not done by the federal government and done by a national association, it moved much longer, came along much faster. We were able to adopt those in October 12 of 2010. We added, we could add fifteen percent more to the standards than what was laid in the Common Core. The state board decided at that time that we did not want technology over here as a subject by itself. We wanted to take technology and weave it among all subjects. I don't think there's any phase of our life now that you don't use a technology of some type, some form of technology, to communicate. And so, we added that to it. Because the one thing that we liked about the Common Core standards, it was heavy on communication. And that is what the, I'm off onto another slide maybe, I don't know. I don't always follow my slides, I'm sorry. But that was one thing that business and industry taught us, too. They said that our students couldn't communicate. They couldn't communicate verbally, they couldn't communicate by writing, and they couldn't communicate by speaking. And so, the Common Core standards were loaded with, that you practiced all three of those in every subject area. Now, what, so I told you we took care and we did the technology. Once we did that, and we voted, we voted and adopted the Kansas College and Career Ready Standards. In the state of Kansas, we don't say we adopted the Common Core, because by the time we got through with those basic standards, we now have the college, the Kansas College and Career Ready Standards. We had public meetings before we adopted that, I think that's on some slide, and I think I've talked mostly about all of these areas in which we adopted. We are very proud of these standards as a state. They will raise the thinking skills of our students. They're not easy. Teachers are having to go through a process of retraining. They're getting to have more fun in their classroom. They are a set of standards in which the teacher can do an object lesson with them. The state assessments that will come out for our new Kansas College and Career Ready Standards will be assessments instead of tests. They will not be a fill-in-the-blame for if you are taught two plus two is four. They will be an assessment in which you will have to show that you know two plus two is four, and when and where to use that. And that is what business and industry means our students to be able to do. They need to be able to think creatively, they need to have higher cognitive skills, and they're pretty proud of these standards, too. I thank you as a local board for letting me be part of this, and I will turn it over so you can show how you have embraced this and how you are making things awesome for the students of your district. Thank you very much. Sorry about that, I never do follow the background very well.
The remainder of the presentation this evening will be made by instructional coaches from around the district. First will be Renee Alcorn from Garden City High School, and Michelle Wells from Kenneth Henderson Middle School. After that, we will have Lisa Jacobs from Alta Brown, and Linda Finch from Jenny Wilson. We will have Marsha Taylor from Bernadine Sitz, Kathy Kane from Charles Stones. And then we'll end with a board member giving part of the presentation. So, Renee and Michelle.
I just, well, I think Darren already took my role. I was going to, go ahead, and I will follow the slides. Go ahead, give you the structure of Ms. Prowl Point. And Ms. Koppel's already presented number one, she talked about the overview of the process and how important it is. And then Renee is going to come up and speak about the current reality. And then the coaches, the other coaches are going to speak about our plan of action, education's plan of action, and then we'll talk about the common school concessions. And then I have a little wrap-up.
And start talking about our current reality. And there's a lot of people out there that are saying this, that schools have failed. But actually, schools have not failed. In fact, we are doing better than we have done in the past. So, what is the problem then? Schools have not failed. You look at the Garden City, oh, sorry. You look at the district assessment results from Garden City, you can see in 2003 that the target in reading was fifty-five point five percent, the target in math was fifty-four point five, and in less than ten years, we raised those scores from eighty to eighty-four point two percent in reading and ninety-four point two in math. So, we obviously had success. So, where is the problem, Mike? The problem is this growing gap between what's happening in the world and what's happening with school improvement. School systems are getting better at educating all students, but young people lack the skills and knowledge that they need to be successful because society demands a higher level and a different skill set than schools do right now. The world, in fact, is changing faster than the education system. And our educational system has to evolve in order to prepare students for the changing world that they are going to have to live and work in. And we will have to keep working to close that gap. The new reality is that the world is no longer the safe, stable, predictable place that it once was. And as a result, there are ever-increasing and incredible changes on our nation's future horizon. Lots of questions about this. What impact will that changing world have on education? How can schools prepare our youth for these realities? And how do we provide the essential skills and empowerment that need to be contributors in solving important world and community problems? Bill Daggett, at Model Schools Convention, said, "If Rip Van, I'm sorry, if Rip Van Winkle woke up today, the only thing that he had recognized is the schools." That's kind of a sad commentary on our lack of progress. This is a slide that we saw at Bill Daggett's presentation at Model Schools, and it just says seventy percent. And it ended up being one of the most powerful slides that all of us saw. Bill Daggett was putting on his horizon, she was saying that seventy percent of our graduates, or seventy percent of our population, are ineligible for the military. And they're ineligible for the military for different reasons. Some of them lack a high school diploma, someone cannot pass a basic literacy test, much less the ASVAB, which is now an admissions exam that's recalibrated every year to add rigor. Some are obese, some are using drugs, some have been incarcerated. But seventy percent cannot be eligible for the military. Even scarier, this seventy percent is raised by one percent a year. Are these people employable? Are they going to be dependent on the rest of us for public assistance? Another learning statistic is that eighty-nine percent of high school teachers say, "Yeah, our students are ready for college." When they polled the teachers at college on those same students, only twenty-six percent said they were ready. Why is the discrepancy? These kids have to have learning-to-learn skills, they have to have organization skills, they have to have basic literacy and math skills. Because they aren't quite up to stuff, a lot of these freshmen need remediation when they get to college. Fifty-one percent, fifty-one point seven percent at two-year colleges, nineteen point nine percent at four-year colleges. Require remediation. And a lot of times, they have to pay for those zero-level classes that they don't get any credit for. Garden City's average is forty-five point nine percent overall.
Got a question?
Yes.
Who's the forty-five point nine percent?
Dr. Dennis?
That's from ASDE, one of the apps on the website they have lets us track where our graduates have gone. And that's what we have.
So, forty-five point nine percent of those kids who graduated from the state high school need remediation.
Correct.
Thank you.
The college dropout year, dropout rate is another concern. In two-year colleges, it's forty-four point five percent, four-year colleges, thirty-four point eight percent. So, if they don't, if they, some of them need remediation, even if they don't, a lot of them just give up after the first year. Garden City's rate is forty-eight point one percent. The average grade, graduation rate from 1983 to 2012 is also alarming. At two-year colleges and three-years, only twenty-nine point one percent of the students actually graduated with an associate's degree. Only thirty-six point six percent graduated with a bachelor's degree. And I looked up today, I was looking for Garden City's average on that, it ranged anywhere from twenty-six to thirty-four percent of our graduates are graduating in three years at a two-year college or five years when they graduate college. This changing landscape is brought about by all of these factors: technology, changes in our financial development, globalization, and the changing demographics of our schools. We're going to have to look ahead to close that gap between school improvement and the changing world. And I love this quote that Bill Daggett said the last day in his closing. He said, "You know, you don't throw the football where the receiver is, but where he will be." And I thought that was a great analogy because we have to look ahead in order to solve this problem. So, what we need is this combined focus. We need to set a culture of high expectations. We have to make our instruction relevant and rigorous. We have to focus on literacy and mathematics. And this is what the college and career readiness skills do. That is what we need. This is another quote that we heard at Model Schools, we just, because today's ceiling will become the floor. We have to change the way we do school. We don't have a choice. Almost everyone wants the schools to be better, but almost no one wants them to be different. Okay? And people are like that, they don't really like change. Our students have limitless technology and information at their disposal. Can they assess it, access it efficiently and effectively? Can they evaluate everything that they find critically? Can they understand the real moral, legal, and ethical issues? Can they create meaning from all the data that they can find? In essence, do they know the value of information, aside from the fact that it's going to come up on the test? And the big question is, do they know what to do when they don't know what to do? And we have to make sure they do. Education has a plan. They do have an action plan, and it is called the Common Core State Standards, or in Kansas, the College and Career Ready Standards.
In regard to the action plan for English Language Arts, there are six basic shifts that need to occur. These shifts need to occur in the knowledge strands of reading, writing, speaking, and listening. For instance, in shift number one, we need to see a balance between informational and literary text. And previously, our main emphasis was on literary text. We now know that we also have to have at least fifty percent of informational text. The reason being is because students need to be able to not only read informational text, but they need to know how to dissect it, comprehend it, and then actually be able to utilize it. In our district currently, what we're doing is we have adopted the Niflin Journey Series, which is fifty-fifty, fifty percent literary text, fifty percent informational text. This allows us to delve into both pieces and to really teach our students how to use that information in both pieces of text. Also, we have to increase the opportunities for exposure to complex text. As you've heard over and over already, students are really going to have to be thinking about their thinking, they're going to have to be exposed to more complex text. This is going to occur in numerous ways. First of all, in our district, what we do, we have whole-group instruction. During that whole-group instruction, students are involved in on-level reading text. They are using that so that they have that on-level text as well as on-level vocabulary. That the teachers scaffold this so that they provide the area support that students need based upon those particular students' needs. They want them to be successful with this test, so they provide the text, so they provide that scaffolding. We also utilize small-group instruction. This is where we are utilizing instructional-based text, which is at their instructional level, so that we can scaffold and help them to actually delve deeper into that text. On levels K through four during our guided reading time, they really work hard to understand whatever piece of text they're working on, and they're taking it to higher levels through higher-level questioning. In grades five through twelve, they are doing what's called close reading. This is rereading of text for a purpose, and they reread so that they can really gain the understanding of the author's purpose, as well as so that they can also figure out the text structure of informational text. So, they do that in grades five through twelve for that close-reading piece. We also need to make certain that we are having that reading/writing connection. It is imperative that we enhance and extend that reciprocity between reading and writing so students make that connection. Also, students need to be able to read a piece of text, and then they need to be able to respond to it. When they are responding to that text, what they have to be able to do is they need to be able to formulate answers, opinions, and arguments. And then they have to be able to substantiate it. They can't just say, "This is what I believe." They have to expand upon that and fully verify and substantiate it. Embedded grammar, we have learned through research that it is no longer effective to really teach grammar in isolation. Do you all remember the days where we had to memorize all the list of like adverbs, and we had to dissect sentences and everything? Well, now they know that through research, we need to really just embed that in the writing process, so students are actually utilizing it. Also, student-centered conversations. Sally mentioned earlier- Sally mentioned earlier that we really need to be having those meaningful conversations. We need students to be able to actually speak. We have tackled this about two and a half years ago in our district, and we have been working on ORACY. ORACY are rich, meaningful conversations that need to occur not only amongst peers, but between the student and the teacher. We have found that by providing sentence stamps, we're often able to facilitate those conversations. We also expect complete sentences from our students. We no longer expect one-word answers. We no longer accept those just little phrases for answers. They have to be in complete sentences. Also, academic vocabulary. It's very important that our students have a common vocabulary from grades K through twelve. And we can instill this by making sure that we're utilizing that academic vocabulary. For instance, if we're talking about inferencing, we call it inferencing. And the students know what inferencing means because we work very explicitly on that particular task.
So what exactly are the standards? Well, the standards are not a curriculum. They are a clear set of goals and expectations for what knowledge and skills are needed to help our students succeed. The local teachers, principals, superintendents, and others will decide how the standards are to be met. The teachers will continue to devise lesson plans just like they do every day, and they will tailor instruction to the individual needs of the students in their classrooms. And that leads us to the roadmap of the standards. And Lisa is handing out a copy of the standards because we believe if you're going to educate the public, you need to know what the standards are. And this roadmap, it looks a little confusing, but it really just shows that there are ten anchor standards. And if you look at your standards, one through ten, those are the ten anchor standards. And you can see how the ELA, the Literacy Standards, the history, social studies, technology, like Sally said a while ago, are all integrated together. You're going to teach the history and the technology at the same time that you're teaching another standard. And those are, you have mathematics and ELA, which is English Language Arts. And the standards are consistent, K-12. And you will actually see the top underlying words are the strands. Then you have the box headings, and then the numbers, ones through ten, are the anchor standards.
As I mentioned earlier, it's necessary for students to be involved in more complex texts. What research is showing is that in order to be college and career-ready, students need to be utilizing and comprehending more complex texts. In the last, the past half-century, that need has risen for them to be utilizing that more complex text. But what's happened with our text that we're utilizing in school, it has not kept up with that demand. The nice thing with college and career-ready standards is that we are expecting the use of that more complex text. In your handouts today, you received a graph. This graph is interesting because what it does is it points out the lexile level that students need to be reading at in order to do common everyday tasks. So if you would look at the mid-range here, the Kansas Driver's License Manual is a lexile of ten-twenty. Previously, we always thought that at that twenty, ten-twenty level, that should be at ninth and tenth grade level. We now are shifting that down to where it's at the sixth through eighth grade level. So you can see that students are going to have to be able to do, to meet these demands, by reading more complex text.
And the complex text, these are the text complexity bands. This is currently what we are using. This is the Common, the Career and College Ready Standards. And you can see, in kindergarten, there were no standards. K-1, there were no, or there were no, there was not a lexile range. But here, we have increased it from one hundred to five hundred. And it goes down, you can see the differences. And we use lexile measures to measure text difficulty in a student reading level. Reading within a lexile range provides a challenge without frustration. And this is the current USD four-five-seven correlation chart. And in K-4, we use the DRA, which is a Diagnostic Reading Assessment, to level our students. And they're either on grade level. And over here, you see K-1, 2, 3, 4, 5, and 6. And the lexile range on the side, that band, it just gives you an easier visual to see what the expectations are for each grade level.
There are shifts in mathematics as well. I think from my experience, yes.
I'm sorry to interrupt you, but just sort of for clarification on that last slide.
Yes.
There are multiple tests that are utilized. Is that what's represented there in different columns?
The Fontes and Pinal are guided reading books that the teachers use in their guided reading. They're leveled. And so they choose the level, they look at the lexile range and the DRA number, and they correspond that to the number that's on the back of the book so they know which book to use that's on the student's reading level, their instructional level.
Does that represent a sort of multiple approach to assessing where that child is?
Well, only the DRA is used to assess where the student is. That is the formal assessment that we use. And we use that level to choose the guided reading level book.
And I'm sorry to interrupt you, but I'm just trying to confirm that in this approach, we, the teachers have the opportunity for, or even the team approach to their child's needs, whether they're on par or have some remedial work to do. There are multiple tests available. Because some child, some child may be an audible learner, may not do well on a written assessment.
We also use the AIMS Web Assessment.
Thank you.
There are shifts in mathematics as well. In my experience in the last several years as we move into the Common Core, the greatest shift is that students are no longer doing page after page of problems that we call, that we call native number problems, where there's no context to the problem. In our classrooms today, students start their instruction with a problem where the numbers are in context. In the Common Core standards, there's a focus and a coherence for mathematics that was lacking in the old standards. The K-5 standards provide a solid foundation in whole numbers, addition, subtraction, multiplication, division, fractions, and decimals. By the end of fifth grade, a student is expected to be fluent in all of those operations with fractions and decimals. The K-5 standards identify key topics, and they continue, in continuous progress at each grade level through high school-level mathematics. This coherence is necessary for students to progress. For years, in my PLC meetings, the biggest complaint has been that students do not have number sense. They don't know what to do with numbers. They don't know what to do when they're presented with a problem that they don't understand. And the Common Core aims to correct that number sense inability in our students and to develop mathematical thinkers that can think about math in context, relevant and rigorous mathematics.
Another key shift in the Common Core or College and Career Ready Standards is the balance of concepts and skills. This builds on a lot like what Marsha just said in that previous slide. The content standards require both conceptual understanding and procedural fluency, learning the critical information to succeed at the next level of coursework. Clustered or integrated standards provide practice in applying mathematical ways of thinking to real-world issues and challenges. The standards, the way they used to be, if you've ever heard the term, the curriculum is a mile wide and inch deep, that's what the teachers always felt they were teaching. So many isolated skills and just trying to cover them all within a certain grade level and then move them on to the next grade level. But yet, students never have really received that conceptual base, that how they should, they need to know how to do those skills. So now, with these new standards, everything is integrated together. The standards are clearer, there is a lot fewer of them, and at a higher cognitive level. So that the students are continually trying to reason and think at higher critical levels as well as know basic facts. An example that Sally had given at the beginning of the presentation was knowing that three plus four is seven. Well, that's great. We know that students need to know those skills. And in the past, it was just learning these rote computation skills, well, these flash card-type things in third grade. But now, we want them to know that, but more importantly is, how do you know that three times four is twelve? How can you prove to me and justify it either verbally or written? Or show me some type of model that proves that three times four is twelve? That's what Common Core is all about, is to develop these reasoning skills in students and then a lot of working will occur in them.
As I was listening today, I heard the, somebody say, "Thinking is the core of the Common Core." And I think that's very, very true in mathematics. The College and Career Ready Standards are good for students. They are consistent across schools, state, and nation. Sally said that, you know, when students move from town to town, from country to state, from state to state, they need to have the same expectations. We all know that sometimes we think, well, this student came from this state, so they don't have, they haven't learned as much as the students. We have to, we have to catch them up. When they come from another state where they know more, then we have to, you know, they have, we have to figure out ways to give them that more. With the College and Career Standards, they're common. So students in Texas, students in Oklahoma, students in Colorado and Nebraska, and students in Kansas are expected to know similar, have similar skills. They're clear standards that allow for more self-directed learning. We've been teaching in fifth and sixth grade fifteen or sixteen indicators that students have to know when they take that test at the end of the year. How frustrating it was if they didn't know those things and we stopped and we practiced and we crammed for that test. These standards give us a different way to look at teaching mathematics. Students at the end of the year are going to be able to think through a problem. I always hated sitting with those kids and helping them reading questions off the test and knowing that they should know how to think through that problem and they didn't. They just pushed A, B, C, or D. We have higher expectations. We want our students to think about their thinking. We want them to model for us. We want them to explain their thinking to us. We want them to explain their thinking to their peers. We want them to be able to stand up in front of the class and say, "This is how I solved this problem." And we're going to allow them to make mistakes. We are not going to expect them to know the one right answer to a problem. If they make mistakes, why did they make that mistake and how can they fix it? There are fewer standards, like Kathy said. The old standards were a mile wide and an inch deep. We were in that complete a lesson a day kind of mode in mathematics. And now, we can sit on fractions. We're going to, in fifth grade, we're going to do fractions for almost the whole school year. So they really understand fractions when they get done with fifth grade. And they're going to be prepared for college and career because they're going to be able to think about mathematics and not just solve native number problems.
The College and Career Ready Standards are also good for teachers. Since they are more focused and they're clearer and there's fewer of them, it's providing and promoting more collaboration. And I just noticed that within my own building. We're spending that time within our PLCs to talk about the critical areas and focuses that our students need to be at. And we are trying to fill in the gaps from previous years where maybe they were not taught some of these foundational skills and then taking it from there. So this is helping us become, we're becoming better teachers as well as the students becoming better learners and thinking at much higher and deeper levels. They give educators more time to focus on the depth of understanding rather than focus on fitting everything in. Again, this goes along with the mile-wide and inch-deep curriculum, which we no longer have. Each grade level within the Common Core standards or College and Career Standards has a certain critical area. And there are focused skill areas in those critical areas that our teachers are addressing and making sure that students have that conceptual base and are ready to move on to the next level at the next grade level by the end of the year. And all of this just builds on the teacher collaboration and us getting together and deciding, okay, this is working. This isn't working, so what can we do to build on this to help our students have a better conceptual base?
So how are we going to address these shifts? First of all, we have to build in rigor and relevance. Rigor is with scaffolding, the planning, and the assessing of thinking. We have to make our students think about their thinking. They need to know how to use a meta-cognitive process. We also have to make it very relevant to our students. They need to see the relationship between what's being taught and their lives and their community and the world around them. We also have to provide those scaffolds. Those scaffolds are providing that support based upon their need. We have to help them with that more complex text so they can be successful. We also have to ensure that they know the reciprocity between reading and writing and that they can actually read that text and then write about it. We have to provide real-world problem solvers. Our students now have to become problem solvers. They can no longer just rely on just giving a one-word response. They can no longer just do out or recall. They have to become problem solvers. They have to know what to do when they don't know what to do. They also have to be able to justify their answers. They have to be able to support their answers, both orally and in written form.
The assessments will change. They will be more difficult. They will be more rigorous and more relevant. They will be performance assessments. And smarterbalance.org is a place you can go to see an actual assessment questions. And one of the assessments for fourth grade will be one hundred and twenty minutes long. So we are going to have to increase the student stamina so they are able to attend to a task for one hundred and twenty minutes. They will have to read an article. They will have to do their research. They will have to decide on the important information in that article. They will have to decide on a plan of action, make an outline, take notes. And then after they've done that, then they will have to write a research paper and use the information that they found in that article to prove their opinion. And these students will have jobs, oh, excuse me. They were designed to see if students know what to do when they don't know what to do. Our students right now are going to have jobs that don't even exist right now. They're going to solve problems that we haven't even thought of. So it is our job as teachers today to teach them to do, so they know what to do when they have an clue. The next generation's assessments are looking for personal students' group.
What was that sign symbol go to?
Smarter Balance dot org. Balanced in the D and, yes, okay, there it is. And the test that Linda was referencing, that's one hundred and twenty-minute test. I have the opportunity to talk about some of the common misperceptions. If Common Core, College and Career Ready Standards were without...